Evening, everyone. Welcome to Bellefonte Borough Council Business Meeting. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Burnier is excused, I think. Mr. Brackville?
Yes, he is.
Ms. Clayton here. Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Present, but I need to...I had a message from Mr. Burnier. He has a family issue that he needs to take care of, so he will be...he will not be here tonight.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't tell you that sooner.
Ms. McKean?
Here.
Ms. Purnell?
Here.
Ms. Sedgwick is excused. Ms. Tosti Basie.
I'm here.
Ms. Meckley is excused, and the mayor is excused.
Thank you, Debbie. Additions to the council meeting agenda under Act 65 of 2021. If a matter is not on the agenda, council may not take official action on it with the following exceptions. Council can act on matters relating to potential or real emergencies. Council may add matters of agency business to the agenda through a majority vote. The council must state why the action item is being added to the agenda.
There's a resolution at your desk tonight. It's Resolution Number 07212025-01. It's regarding a grant with the Pennsylvania...with Multimodal Transportation Fund. This grant is due August the 1st, so Julie is trying to see if she can get this and get this out by that date, so if council would be willing, we'd like to see you add this to the agenda and approve it so we can do the grant. If not, the grant will be open again in March, and we can do it at that time, but we'd like to see if we can get it in now. It's for a ramp at the train station.
Thank you, Joanne. Thank you, Shauna. Is there any discussion?
Is that the under new business?
New business.
Oh, new business, okay. Yes.
So, just talk about to put it on the agenda, so that's what we're voting for.
Right. We'll vote now to put it on new business.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Basie?
Yes.
Public comment. Borough council intends to take public comment related to the motion that is on the floor after it has been duly made and seconded. The order of comments will be public comment and then council comment, including proposed amendments by council members. If amendments are proposed to the original motion, the public will then only comment on the amendment before the final vote is taken. You must be a Bellefonte resident, a nonprofit representative, a business owner, or an official representative of another governmental agency. Speakers shall identify themselves by name and street municipality if outside the borough of Bellefonte. Comments are limited to three minutes. Thank you, Julie. Under Communications, Bellefonte EMS Seventh Annual Joint Meeting Invitation for 7:00 PM on Wednesday, July 30, 2025. That is next Wednesday. The meeting will be held at the Bellefonte EMS 369 Phoenix Avenue in Bellefonte, Pennsylvania. Please RSVP to Scott Rote. You have his email address. Who's planning to go so far?
Oh, great. Thank you very much. There's still time to sign up.
Opportunity for public comment period. Long Range Transportation Plan 2025, Tuesday, July 22, 2025, 3:00 to 4:30 PM and 6:00 to 7:30 PM. Cog General Forum Room 2643 Gateway Drive in State College. This is for your information only.
Three times? Three times that day?
Two...looks like two times. One from 3:00 to 4:30 and six to 7:30.
Anybody doing six to 7:30?
I plan to attend the hybrid meeting earlier in the day, the 3:00 to 4:30. Yeah, if you email Ann Mezner at Center Region Council of Government.
Okay.
Ann Mezner, it's crcoG.net.
Okay, okay.
Ann Mezner?
Yeah.
Net, N-T.
Okay, thank you. Bellefonte Waterfront, thank you from Tom Songer for assisting with NPDES permits. Again, no council action is required. We did also receive one more communication. It's related to 25 mile an hour speed bumps on High Street, and this is...I guess, Mr. Johnson, you answered to this, and Streets will be taking care of this then, is that correct?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Under the Consent Agenda, all items listed on the consent agenda are considered routine and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the members of council request a specific items to be removed for separate action. Can I have a motion in a second?
I'll second to Clayton.
Thank you. Any discussion? I would like to have the Campbell-Durant invoice removed, please.
What was that?
The Campbell-Durant invoice for June.
Don't see it. I don't see that.
Anybody else have anything they want removed? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Basie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I pulled this one out. It was dated July 9. It was for June...June work that we had done with Campbell-Durant involving personnel. I had looked back, because I knew this personnel issue may have started earlier. We had a invoice from them in May, but nothing in June. So, I did ask about it, and I did find the one in June. It was paid, and it was not approved by council, so I'm not sure how you want to handle that and if you have questions about it. We usually approve them, and this one...this one was missed, and it's for a rather large amount, $3,200 plus.
Is that something that we can see copies of at some point then?
Yeah, we can send it to you tomorrow. I apologize, I didn't...I didn't know that we missed an invoice, so...
That's okay. I just thought it was pretty important, and it was a pretty high amount, so...
Well, they're actually all supposed to be in the packet, so it's just there must have been an oversight, and I'll take responsibility for that.
So, should we hold off on approving this one until we see the other one?
I think so, yeah.
So, I'll make a motion to table this one and put it on the next one along with the one in June.
Well, we can approve the one that we have, right?
No, what I'm saying is we...I want to see both of them at the same time.
Before you approve either one of them?
Correct.
Okay. Does Joanne have a second on that then?
I'll second.
We don't need a...we don't need a motion. We'll just put both invoices in the packet for the August 7 meeting.
Okay. If that's all right? Yeah, we can do that. Great, thank you so very much. Yep. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to reports. Chief Whitmer has his report. Do you have anything to add?
No, I don't have anything to add. As you can see, we're quite busy in June. A lot of community events, promotions. Our officers are out being proactive, as you can see with our traffic stops, so anybody have any questions for me?
No, just to thank you for your service while I was out of the country.
No problem. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Parking report was submitted. Manager of Grants and Special Projects, Julie.
I do have a couple items to add to that report. The report was submitted at the table for you all to review. So, another item to add is the tree grant was...we received that today, so we will have 15 trees to be planted in the fall. And also, I wanted to add that I am also looking at a...some police grants specifically for a camera to help with crime scene investigation, so that one was not on there, but that is one that Chief Whitmer had given me a quote for, and I have been looking into those, would be in the process of possibly applying for that. Does anyone have any questions?
I actually do, and I don't know if this falls under your report or if this is under the other committee, but during the Parks Committee meeting the one day, we had talked about possibly getting some high school students to come and help with some projects. Does that fall under this report, or is that...I mean, or is that...
Yes, that would fall under what...something that I usually do, yes.
Okay, all right.
So, yes, that's noted in our Parks Committee meeting minutes, too.
Okay, so is that something you're intending to pursue for this fall?
Yes, yes, certainly. Any other?
Any other questions?
Questions for that?
Thank you, Julie.
Okay. I'm just going to stay here for the next one.
Great. Would you like to start with that, please?
So, for the Office of Community Affairs, we did have our postponed meeting today at 5:00 PM in the Oak Room, and for that review, the Planning Commission did approve the Villa du Park Plan, conditional of...on...based on the recommendations from the county. So, those are being addressed right now, and we do have Steve Kirsch from HRG here to answer any questions that anyone might have on that plan. That was the main topic for our meeting, and since it had to be rescheduled, so I'm going to have Steve come up if anyone has any questions for him. We have the map up there of the area, if you would like to take a look at that.
Just out of curiosity, what exactly is the property split, and what does this do to that particular intersection?
Hello, my name's Steve Kirsch. I'm from HRG. I'm representing the Bellefonte Area School District. So, the purpose of the work at this intersection was to take the intersection from an odd angle to more of a traditional cross intersection. It lines up with the proposed school driveway as well. It also lowers the intersection to provide better site distances from all directions there. It'll be a straight-through traffic from going Airport Road onto Governor's Park Road, and then there'll be stop signs for people coming out of the...vehicles coming out of the school or coming out of the other side of Airport Road. So, in order to do this intersection work, we needed to obtain a portion of the property, .04 acres from the Villa du Park property. It is a 7.74 acre property or 6.74 acre property, so the remaining tract will be 6.69 acres after the .04 acres is removed. The process through PennDOT, this .04 acres will be subdivided, transferred over to the school district, and then immediately dedicated to PennDOT as PennDOT right-of-way. It could not go directly from Villa du Park to PennDOT. It had to go through the school district.
And will this level out that big hump that's currently there?
I'm sorry, what was...
There's a big hump when you're coming down Governor's Park Road into Airport Road, and the line of sight is really bad.
Yes.
That will disappear.
Yeah, as part of this project, the road will be lowered about three to four feet at the largest cut and then tapered back in, so that should...
Glad to hear that.
Improve site distances by quite a bit.
So, you said there would be two stop signs?
There'll be a stop sign coming out of the school driveway and then a stop sign directly across from it, from people coming...
Okay.
From Airport Road into town.
So, Airport Road to Governor's Park Road is going to be straightaway with no stop there?
Correct, and the stop signs will have another sign that says cross-traffic does not stop.
Okay. Is there a...what would be the reason why you wouldn't...it wouldn't be a four-way stop?
To be honest, I'm not sure what the...it was submitted through PennDOT through traffic study, and PennDOT made the ultimate decision.
Okay, because that's going to be a very busy intersection. Thank you.
Does anybody else have questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the subdivision plan for the Salet du Park by the planning...with the Planning Commission completing the work required by the county.
I'll second Brackville.
Is there any more discussion?
Just to be clear, that's approval of the subdivision plan for Villa du Park as approved by the Planning Commission earlier this evening.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Basie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Holderman, we have your report. Do you have anything?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do you have anything you'd like to add or talk about from your report?
I have nothing unless there's...anyone has any questions. Go ahead, Joanne.
The...in your report, you said that there was going to be a, I assume, a HR Committee meeting on July 29. Is that still true, or did you change it?
Still the 29th. We just changed it from 1:00 to 2:00.
Is that the...
It's the contract, yeah.
We changed it to the 31st because council can't be there, the 29th and 30th. If it's the only reason I know that...
I keep saying, I said it earlier today. For some reason, the 29th is in my head, but it's the 31st at 2:00. I thank you.
Only because I've looked at it 100 times.
Did I have it on the report as a 29?
Yeah, I think that was probably done before we changed it. Okay, under Committee Reports, Environmental and Parks Committee.
We have nothing to report. Our last meeting was on June 12, which we reported to council on June 16. Our next meeting is scheduled for August 14.
Thank you, Joanne. Finance and Administration Committee, Ms. Clayton?
Thank you. The Finance and Admin Committee met on July 15. It was Ms. Sedgwick, Ms. McKean, and myself. We discussed a variety of personnel matters. We talked about some administrative oversight ideas, finalized some of the details for the ongoing Borough manager selection, and considered the need for fireworks ordinance, and that's in our packet this evening for your consideration.
Thank you. Infrastructure and Public Works, Mr. Brackville?
I have no report.
Thank you. Ordinance Ad-Hoc Committee, Ms. Tosti Basie?
Again, nothing to report. Our...that next meeting will be on August 14, and I assume that at that point, we can...the Ordinance Ad-Hoc Committee can look at the fireworks ordinance.
Great, thank you. Streets Committee, Mr. Johnson?
Short report, but I'll go through it as quickly as I can. Stamped crosswalks that are to be added at High Street and South Spring Street. Matt Almond, to the best of my knowledge, as of today, I didn't talk to him, but we don't have a start date from Laurel Asphalt yet. We took a look at the Dollar General loading and unloading, and Deb, Ms. Clayton, has had observed the truck unloading on the east side of Spring Street in front of the Dollar General store, so our suggestion would be to paint the curb yellow from the corner of Bishop down to the entrance to the parking lot and sign it with no unloading and loading at that...
Stop and standing?
Well, no stopping or standing. It appeared as though the truck used the opposite side of the street as to where we hoped they would do their loading and unloading, and it was also late in the day. I forget what time, 4:00 PM or something, I can't remember. But if council agrees to that suggestion, we'd like to ask Mr. Holderman to pass that information along to Matt, and if Mr. Almond agrees, we'd like to make that recommendation.
Would that be a...would that be a motion?
I don't...I think administratively, we could just dawn what...do you agree?
This is just a maintenance.
Yeah, that's...
We can do it that way.
Yeah, I think it's just an administrative decision, so...and then another one was the hand railing on South Allegheny Street from Logan Street up to Hill. Is that accurate? Matt has contracted or spoke with a contractor to make repairs on that hand railing all the way from Logan Street until the end of the hand railing where it stops. Let's see. I think...oh, Rita, go ahead. You can take this one.
So, I can report that the work on North Allegheny Street to stop the stormwater flow down onto the neighbor's sidewalk has officially started today. They removed our...part of our driveway, and they're going to be putting in the curbing tomorrow, and they're going to replace the driveway part of it with concrete on Wednesday, and all goes well, we should be able to be back in business parking in our parking lot by Thursday, so looks like it's going to move along pretty quickly.
This is addressing...one of our residents had some...during the heavy rainstorms, there was some flooding that was interfering with her home, so this is to remediate that for that resident. The other thing we talked about was the old...the all-time favorite, Dawn, paper streets in the borough, so we're going to continue that discussion as we learn more and think of other... other, I guess there was somebody asking a question about it, so we'll have more discussion on paper streets again. And then I suggested that North Decatur and Church Lane, somebody piled some logs along Church Lane, at that corner where Decatur comes down from East Curtain, and then it runs into a blocked, it used to be an access, that went from Church to East Lynn, somebody put some logs along the road there, I think they need to be removed, it's a safety hazard. That's it.
Doug, can I ask you
Yes, ma'am.
About the paper streets? I was not familiar with that term and didn't look it up, so I may not be, I may be the only one that didn't know that, but would you explain that?
To the best that I can, there's some abandoned streets in the borough, and occasionally there's some maintenance that's required on that, on what we call paper streets or unopened streets. Dawn, you probably can describe this better than I can.
Yeah, these are streets, Barb, that are unordained, they're not deeded to anybody, they're not, you know, you go into them, the borough doesn't own the street, and if you, you know, go back so far, there's nothing in a deed that describes who the owner of the street is. A lot of them, you know, probably were, where you would find extensions to what was once to be like a continuation of a road, like, say for example, on Church Lane and Wilson Street, how it stops, you know? But the road continues, if you were to continue, it would go down to Monroe, for example. So there's over by the cemetery, what had happened, and I just for, just to give everyone some history on this, probably a number of years ago, up on Monroe Street, where you live, little bit farther up, between Monroe and I think it's the next street over towards the Methodist Church.
Oh, okay, yeah, Hughes.
Hughes, yes. In between there, there's a, that's one of the areas where there's a paper, it's no one owns the property, and what had happened is, is that there was a large oak tree that got struck by lightning, and the neighbors were worried that this oak tree, which I could only get my arms halfway around, was so huge, you know, they wanted it cut down. Well, it really wasn't on borough property, we went ahead and paid like $7,000 to have that tree cut down. And then at that time, we'd never budgeted money for any of this, and found out, well, there were trees all over the borough that were in this situation, so we went to our solicitor and then, you know, said, hey, who's really responsible? And basically what ended up coming about, was, you know, Jeff provided us information on, you know, how we could guide owner, homeowners that maybe live next to these paper streets, how they could, you know, procure the street, or procure that, a portion, you know, for their own property, since it butts their property, if they choose to do so, or if they chose that, hey, I'm interested in having a little more property, and the only payment would be that they have to pay the attorney to do the paperwork. There was no one you're paying the property for, so that was essentially it, but that's how the whole term, these paper streets came about, I mean, that's how we were referring to it, and anytime it's really an issue is when we're having residents call us after these windstorms, and they want the borough to come in and take these trees down, and it's really not on borough property, so we, you know, we just don't do that anymore.
Okay.
We do give the landowners the options sometimes of, if it's not in a right-of-way of our sewer or water, to purchase those, as long, in one case, I think we did do it one place, where if it butts your property in the neighbor, you can share that, and let's say it's 50 feet wide, so you say to your neighbor, I'll take half, you take half, and then together they bear the costs, and they add 25 feet to their property. But that has to be in an agreement with the rest of the folks. For instance, I can use the lane, paper street behind East Curtain and East Beaver, that starts at Armor and goes down to North Wilson. You know, the people use that as an access to the back of their property, so it's unlikely that we would permit the landowner to buy that property on that paper street. But that's an unordained right-of-way, is that an accurate description?
Yeah, if we have a sewer line, then we're not going to do it, I mean, but the areas that I'm referring to are just, there's one over by Union Cemetery, the new part off of Boroughs, if you continue
Yes.
On Borough Street, and you just, you know, go as far as you can, it comes to a dead end, and then it goes into the cemetery, that area there was, would be a perfect example, it's kind of runs parallel to Howard Street.
Okay. Great, thank you both very much.
If I could just, Doug, the signs, I wanted to, Matt told me today that the signs will be in this week, so these are the no-loading signs, he'll install one over on Phoenix Avenue, and then along the Dollar and General, Dollar General. And I just wanted to make sure that I'm clear, you want us to paint yellow on the streetscape side that we just finished, the Dollar General side?
Yes, the smoke shop side, the east.
That's what I meant, the smoke shop, yeah, across from the Dollar General.
Yes.
And how far?
From the corner of east, of West Bishop to the entrance to the parking lot.
Okay. Don't they unload there?
They're supposed to.
The idea, Randy, was we signed it for them to unload on the west side of South Spring Street.
That's right in front of the building.
That is correct, and those unloading hours are from, I could be off on these, from 6:00 AM until 9:00 AM, okay? And so that, that's most convenient for the store, and it's most convenient for loading and unloading, and that was the compromise, to give them space to unload and load.
So would it make sense to put the lines on that side, and not the side that people are gonna be traveling?
Makes sense.
Makes sense to put the lines, what lines, the unloading lines?
Yeah.
Oh, well, there's, we have, the only time they can, those are spaces where they're loading and unloading, so we, when they're done unloading, they become parking spaces, so we don't wanna take up space on the opposite side of the street and then restrict traffic flow through Spring Street with them loading and unloading, because the parking spaces would still be active at that time.
They could be, but if it's during that, the 6:00 to 9:00, those parking lots, those parking spaces aren't available, but after that, I understand what you're saying.
They're not available from 6:00 to 9:00.
Right, so.
For, that's for loading and unloading.
Right.
Yeah.
So then, once they're done, those, their parking places become usable.
Correct.
So that's what I'm saying, just take the paint line up to that next parking stall.
What we're talking about is on the east side of the street?
I know what you're talking about, but it doesn't make sense to put it over there because it's gonna confuse people.
We're not going to put the loading, we're not putting the loading zone over there, we want to yellow curb it from Bishop to the exit of the smoke shop parking lot so that nobody stops there, period, for any reason. That's a travel lane.
I don't think it needs to go clear of the parking, I don't think it needs to go clear of the parking lot.
And I believe in the end of May, when we passed the ordinance, clearly stating that loading and unloading would be directly in front of
We did.
The CVS store, so it's, we've already had that issue, I thought, resolved.
Well, yes, we've resolved it, but a truck driver coming into town has not read our ordinances.
I understand.
If they see a yellow curb, they're not supposed to park there.
I agree, I agree with you. I'm just saying that from what you're saying, Randy, I think redoing it now is take, going back to what we had already discussed and agreed upon a month, almost two months ago.
Okay, and one, one last thing, we, just to public announcement, is we are going to take a look at the speed bump request from Mr. and Mrs. Coven, we'll bring that up at our next Streets Committee meeting, and hopefully with Matt's input and our committee, and Julie, and Mr. Holderman, maybe we'll have some sort of resolution, or some, some idea of how we can help reduce the speed on that street.
I know it is really a problem.
Yeah, so, that's it.
Great, thank you.
That's a, that's a problem from the jail all the way up to Parkview Heights on East High Street. Yep. It's a little slower within the residence up toward the middle school, but after that, yeah, it's a mess.
Yeah, the street is so narrow, Randy, it's, it's
But I don't know about putting anything like that on where I'm at with High Street.
We'll add that from the jail all the way through Parkview, we'll take, take a look at it.
That's all a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public Transportation Tax Force Committee, Ms. Cletton?
Okay, the committee did not meet in June due to a variety of vacations and stinking hot weather. On July 1st, as I reported at our last meeting, the Commissioners approved the agreement between the Office of Transportation and the Borough for Transportation Services, an executed copy of the agreement, I believe, has been received by the borough, and Dave Lamison is here this evening, if he would like to give us an update on enrollment and demand for the new service.
Certainly, I appreciate the opportunity, actually, yeah, so in the first 13 service days of July, we have scheduled 64 total trips sponsored by the Bellefonte Borough, averages out to about five a day. I think the majority of those trips are work-related. I don't have a trip purpose on this report, but I will try to have that, excuse me, going forward, so we know the purpose of the trips, but I'm relatively certain that most of all of these are work-related trips. Going downtown State College, a couple people, and up to Giant, a couple, up by the mall, up across from the mall, so, but we have regulars, they're going every day, and it's nice. So far, the borough spent $1,206 of their allotted money in the first, up through the 18th of the month, so that's, that's well within line of where we want it to be at this point, so I'm sure it'll increase as we move on, but we'll certainly keep that, be mindful of that as we go, but, you know, the majority of the trips were beyond the first tier, so the borough cost on those trips are $1,950. There was a few that were under that, but most of them are the second tier of our mileage service, so, any questions?
That's all very good news.
Yes.
Thanks, Mr. Lamison for coming in.
Oh, you're very welcome, my pleasure, and I'll come back with a full month's report, obviously, at your next meeting, and maybe I can have the trip purpose breakdown, so we know what the people are actually doing.
Any, any recommendations for us to make it better for you? Is your staff dealing with the phone calls, okay?
No, everything's been fine, yep, we've been able to handle it well so far, and, you know, I think it's, it's great for the residents of Bellefonte that need this service, that you're doing this, it really is, and we're glad to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I just like to add that I think the media coverage that we've gotten on this has been pretty good. Dave and Deb were at the Commissioners' meeting, and the CDT reported on what both of them said at that meeting, and I think that has helped. They also tried to call me in Italy while I was there, but I did not have phone access, so they went back to some of the, our talk at our May meeting, and quoted me from that. They, and I think what it shows is that the, the media is interested in what's happening here, and I think it may help us get better services from the Center County Transportation with the media putting forward programs that we're offering to the community.
Great, thank you. Please, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Joanne. Our committee is going to meet tomorrow evening, Tuesday, July 22nd, at 6:00, to review the CCMPO Long Range Transportation Plan, specifically looking at the sections on public transportation, and with Mr. Lamison's help, we will continue to actively track the usage and cost of the new transportation service that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, that's great news for our residents. Okay, moving on to Liaison Reports, we have one from Bellefonte Emergency Medical Services, anybody have comments or questions on that? I do have one thing, and Dawn, maybe you can help me with this, do we get reports on their administrative costs?
I can't answer that off the top of my head.
I don't recall seeing it, but I think that would be important to, to know what kind of administrative costs they have, if that would be possible when they do, it looks like they do quarterly reports.
Oh, I can call Scott and ask him, and I would think also, I would mention, when he goes over, when you go over, you know, for his annual meeting here, and, you know, coming up, they usually go through a lot of things, so I don't think Scott would put, hold anything back from what the costs are, but I'll ask him if he can add it to the report.
I think that would be helpful, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Bellefonte Borough Authority, Mr. Johnson, you have your report submitted, anything you want to add to that?
The minutes of the meeting are in the packet.
Yes.
I don't really have anything to add at this time for that. I know we, I think we advertised for a vacancy, I'm not sure where those applications are, or if we received, I know Mr. Stewart applied, did you hear of any other applicants for that?
No, but I think I asked them, I was, I had checked with the staff, and they said that we, the way it was gonna work is that we couldn't bring it to council, it has to come to the authority first to make a recommendation, so it won't be until your meeting in September, I mean, August, if you meet before the 4th, which I don't think you do, so we probably won't be putting the person on board until September, the way I, the way I understand it, Doug.
Our meeting in August is on the 5th, yes, so, yeah.
So if you make a recommendation, it'll be on the council meeting, the first meeting in September?
Thanks, Dawn.
Thank you, Doug. Center County Library Board, Ms. Cletton?
I have nothing to add, the minutes are in your packet. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
You've been very busy on the library board. Workplace Safety Committee, Mr. Brackville?
That's submitted, a short meeting, we need to keep it, I think, a minute, something like that. If we do, you know, if you discuss, and you make your course, you can sort of, with the microphone.
Microphone.
Yeah, anyway, it's submitted into the packet, and again, I'm not gonna repeat it. Bellefonte Fire Department will have that meeting the end of the month, the 4th Thursday.
Okay, great, thank you.
Center Region canceled theirs. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, moving on to current and old business, the Potter Street Railroad Spur, could I have a motion and a second to remove from the table, please?
All, so moved, Cletton?
Thank you.
Second, Brackville.
Thank you. Now, could I have a motion and a, do we need to vote on that? Okay, let's vote on that then, please.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Cletton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Basie?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I, can I have a motion and a second to approve the use of $29,000 from the Special Projects Fund to cover the cost of the transfer of the spur to the borough from Cedar Cog? Thank you, Joanne.
I'll second.
Thank you, Shawna. Discussion on this.
Just a, just a quickie for the public
Thank you, Joanne.
I'll say.
Thank you, Shawna. Discussion on this.
Just a quickie for the public's knowledge. These funds would be, from the Special Projects Fund, would be, will be used to hire Pantera to do a survey for the subdivision that will go to the planning commission, and then to pay Cetacog for the track metal, and finally to register the sale with county's recorder of deeds.
That's correct, Joanne, and just, you know, council, so councils are aware, you had asked at the last meeting, so we, you know, put up this drawing here, you can see, so, the, where it's the yellow and blue, that's where the actual spur begins, that that track will stay, that's about five hundred feet of the leased track for the two historical railroads, and then we'll work on some type of an agreement with the Bellefonte Historic Railroad Society. So, if council would choose, you wouldn't have to pay the eighteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars for the track, that nine hundred and seventy-five feet that would be conveyed to the borough, that's all in the, it's in the blue line, beginning here and running back here to where Sutton Engineering used to be. So, that choice would be up to, that would be up to you. If you didn't want to have the track, then it would just be approximately nine thousand eight hundred dollars for the survey and subdivision.
So, the yellow, the track would remain, is that correct?
The yellow and blue would remain, that's correct. And that would be for the two historic railroad trains at the BHC, BHC.
Yeah, the yellow and the blue, the track would remain, all of it. So, when I look at it, it wouldn't be that the track would be removed from the blue, and, not the yellow, but the blue, so the track remains the whole tract of property?
If we pay for it.
Yeah, yeah, so, and they would use that, the historic railroad, no?
They would use the part that's the yellow and blue check.
Okay, so, could we remove the blue part?
Yes.
And save some money?
You would save eighteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Okay, so, I'd like to amend the motion.
Okay, I'd like to have more discussion on that.
Okay.
I originally thought, like you, that why are we doing this? And Mr. Haldeman mentioned this, too, when you go out on those railroad tracks, it would be fairly easy to make that very walkable using the tracks as the boundaries for the walkway. So, I went out over the weekend and did walk some of that. It is really nice, it is right by the stream. It's a little more expensive to purchase it with the tracks, but I think we could use it to our benefit to make that a walkway. So, although, with the tracks. Yeah, because then you wouldn't have to put dividers or any kind of parameters on it at all. So, I thought like you, and then when I went out there and walked, I was like, okay, this would be really nice to do that. So, I ended up changing my thought on it, but I certainly understand what you're saying.
If I could just let, you know, for council, you know, we could always sell, you know, the track if someday you didn't ever do anything with it. That metal's always going to be worth money, so, I mean, if we don't, if we don't let Cetacog pick it up and take it, and it's ours, someday you can get your money back if that's what you chose to do.
And I kind of like the tracks there, sort of going with what you're talking about, but it also gives the feeling of the history of the area, and it would be really nice to have a unique walkway.
I agree, Joanne, it's really pretty out there, really very nice.
And just from a dollars and cents point, if you were to take the tracks out now and then have to reinstall some kind of edging for a new walkway, it's going to cost you a whole lot more than twenty thousand dollars.
I don't disagree with any of your comments, I guess we would have to put some sort of grit that's a lot finer than what appears to be the 2B, or larger.
Yeah.
So, we would have an expense of getting 2RC or something of that nature.
It would be similar to what you see on the rails, the trails.
Yeah, yeah, so.
And there are a lot of overgrown bushes, a couple of trees and the railroad tracks, so it's not going to be minimal amount of money, but certainly less, I think, if we keep the tracks.
We're still paying twenty-nine thousand for this, right?
Yes.
So, with our situation as we are in Bellefonte, I think this is not a good move to make at this point, you know. We've worked with the spur and all that for a couple of years now, we never hear anything back, and then all of a sudden it pops back up again. And I think, you know, some of the monies, we need to look at, we need to figure out, because we, I saw a lot of things on the budgets that we were getting that overdue, over, they were over, over the cost, over the cost. And we need to look at that stuff, and maybe just keep that in the special area for a while. I don't think it's a big emergency to have to do it now.
Okay, any other discussion? It did not.
I didn't, I, yeah, I didn't officially make the amendment, I said I would like to amend the motion, but you said there were more comments, so I'm good to not make the amendment.
Okay. So, there is a motion to approve the use of the twenty-nine thousand from Special Projects Fund, which we do have, to cover the cost of the transfer of the spur to the borough from Cetacog. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
I still, I have a question.
Okay.
Spending that money right now, I don't think is reasonable until we get, you know, get the new person in and have that stuff. It doesn't make sense to me, so.
I call the question.
Let's go for the vote.
Mr. Brackville?
No.
Ms. Clayton, yes. Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti-Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The borough will be loading compost into vehicles on Saturday, August twenty-third, September twentieth, and October eighteenth, from eight AM to twelve PM at the Muster Lane Compost Facility. The cost is fifteen dollars per cubic yard, which must be paid in advance at the Borough Administrative Office. The office is open Monday through Friday from eight AM to four-thirty PM. I assume that's on the website, or can it be?
If it isn't, we will put it on, but I assume that it is.
I have a question on that. Is there any way that we could pay online instead of people actually having to come in to the office, like we pay parking tickets, or, I mean, is that?
Probably not this year, Doug, but we could work on setting something up next year, because it's, I mean, when we did the parking, I mean, it wasn't, it took a while to get that, you know.
Yeah, I know there's an expense for it, too, through the credit card service.
Certainly, I think if it turns out to be successful, and we want to end up moving forward with doing it next year, maybe more frequently, we certainly could look at that.
Okay, thanks, Dawn.
Could people pay by check over at the compost facility? Is that a possibility? No?
No, the object was to have it taken care of in the office, and then also there was a waiver that was going to be signed at that time, too, but usually we've tried to avoid having, having people.
The staff.
Yeah, the staff handle the checks and things out at the compost facility, it's, we've had them handle it in, up here in the office.
Okay. The Friends of Tallyrand draft cooperative agreement was sent to the Friends of Tallyrand Committee for their comments and review. Any comments are due by Thursday, July thirty-first, 2025. No council action is needed, that way if that's finished, we can discuss that at the meeting in August. Under new business, we have the resolution that Mr. Haldeman had told us about, it is a multimodal transportation fund grant from the Commonwealth Finance Authority to be used for the addition of a ramp to the entrance of the Bellefonte train station and a portable lift to increase accessibility for all residents. Could I have a motion and a second to approve this?
So moved, Clayton?
Second, Brackville.
Any discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti-Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Highlighted blighted properties ad hoc committee. The ad hoc committee needs volunteers to inspect blighted properties in the borough along the center region, along with the center region code director. I am requesting volunteers to serve on this. This is something that I would like to serve on, and so I'm looking for two other people who would like to serve on this, along with center region code director. Joanne? And Dan? Great, thank you so very much. We will be in touch with him and figure out when we can meet, thank you.
What exactly qualifies as blighted?
I think what, when the committee was talking, Shawna, they were kind of referring to some of the, some of the buildings maybe in downtown that are, you know, seem to be in a little bit of disrepair and not being kept up. So, it's, I think the committee wanted to get, actually wanted to maybe bring the center region code executive director in to talk, but he felt maybe it would be better to work with an ad hoc committee, just to, you know, have more, be more enlightened for their discussion, go look at, you know, some of the, some of the buildings that we would, you know, be referring to.
So, this isn't, this wouldn't be residential buildings, this would just be the downtown?
It could be residential as well.
Okay, thank you.
But we will bring reports back to council on that.
Curiosity question, how are we, we're going back to what Shawna said, how are we defining blighted? Because according to state law, blighted is a property that basically has someone who hasn't paid taxes, and they, it's just sitting there and falling apart. I think what we're talking about here is a broader issue of the non-maintained property that we want to make sure doesn't get to that point.
I think you're correct, Joanne, and there's also been a safety issue, too, I believe, with that, so it, I think blighted is kind of a loose term at this point.
Yes, I would agree with that. It may not just be blighted, Joanne, it might be, it might be more to do with, you know, also working with center region code executive director on some things, maybe that, you know, have gone through HARB, and how HARB has handled those things, and, you know, just more communication on how that, the whole process could work better to ensure that these places are.
There might be a couple other, another group that might be interested in working with this, maybe not part of the ad hoc.
Let's get started with the committee, and then we can figure out.
And we can talk about that later.
We can talk about that, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Drafted fireworks ordinance, can I have a motion and a second to develop a fireworks ordinance?
So moved, Clayton?
I'll second. McKean?
Thank you. Discussion.
We have tried this several times, and we've always go back to state, we follow what the state does. And I'm not sure what we're trying to pull out of this, I mean, you know, I know a lot of fireworks goes off, but you, you know, we don't have enough police officers to be around everybody, but boy, if we could bring some people down from State College on the night that they're shooting these off, might be able to catch some people. I'd rather see us do that than do anything with this ordinance.
Okay, we follow the state guidelines?
Yes.
But Act Seventy-Four allows each individual municipalities to create their own ordinance, so that, we don't have anything on the books right now, so if somebody is actually.
Well, we do, we have the state guidelines.
If somebody's doing due diligence, and they look at Bellefonte's ordinances, there is nothing in there about fireworks. So, if you go to the fireworks store down on Branch Road and East College Avenue, and as a consumer, you purchase consumer fireworks, and you're looking for a place where you can set them off, there's nothing anywhere that says you can't do it in Bellefonte.
Yes, there is. With all the space you have in Bellefonte, nobody could set, you could set it off, it would be illegal to do it.
Well, that's the point.
That's why I'm telling you, get the police department, get some folks to come down.
But that's state, correct?
That is the state, what we can do as a municipality.
Well, we could do that, we could ask.
Randy, because you let Deb finish.
Specifically, get an ordinance that says, within the borough of Bellefonte, you may not use consumer fireworks, period, because there, it's a hundred and fifty-foot radius around any building or any vehicle, whether you own it or not, and there is no place in Bellefonte where you can set off fireworks where you are not.
That's right.
Within that radius. If we had that on the books, which includes a fine of up to five hundred dollars, that puts an enforceable, then we have something that's enforceable, instead of saying, well, we're just following the state guidelines.
I didn't think this last July was.
It was horrible.
To me, I heard it going off, but it was.
Downtown was a purple haze, there was smoke everywhere, and there were fireworks going off until one in the morning.
Yeah, I received emails from residents on Half Moon Hill also, having some fireworks that were pretty disturbing.
And ultimately, this is a public safety issue. So, it doesn't cost us anything to put this on the books, but what it does is give us the tools to help remediate the problem.
Could we assign a designated area for fireworks, like when the carnival would put them off in the past, outside of the borough, or outside of the downtown, anyway?
I think we can only do inside Bellefonte. Outside Bellefonte, you have no control or.
No jurisdiction.
Right, right, and everything's too close. You're always too close to something to set off the fireworks, according to the state law. Is there any other discussion on this? So, this will be turned over, then, Deb, to the ordinance committee, is that correct? You're going to be part of this, though, right, because you've really spearheaded this.
It could either go to the, I think what Joanne's doing is ordinance review, this could go to finance and admin as a new ordinance, and we could, we could work on that.
Okay, perfect.
Deb, if I could just recommend, I'd like the committee to see if they could at least, you know, talk with Chief Whitmer as well, and, you know, as you're developing this.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti-Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you.
There is a modification to Employee Policy Number Two Ten, Employment Reference Checks. Could I have a motion and a second to approve the modifications to Employee Policy Number Two Ten, as recommended by the borough staff?
So moved.
Thank you, Joanne. Thank you, Shawna. Discussion.
Where do the, who receives this report, and who has access to it?
This, you can.
It would, it would be done by borough staff, Doug, and then that going into the employee file.
So.
The only people that have access to it would be the people, the three people in the office that have access to the HR files.
And what administration positions are they?
Billing administrator, the administrative assistant to the borough manager, and the borough manager.
And how are they vetted?
I don't know what you mean by that.
In other words, are they bonded to keep this confidential information? How are they vetted, those employees?
They're the only people that have access to the files, I don't know that they've ever been vetted.
My concern is that's confidential information that we're asking for, very confidential information, and I think it needs to be only to the borough manager. No other staff needs to see that, in my opinion. to see that, in my opinion.
That may be the case, but if it's in the file, then they're going, the other people that have access to the personnel file, because they do work with those files and have to put information in those files. So that's why there would be three people that have access. There's a lock on the door, nobody can get to the cabinet, and then there's a lock on the cabinet.
I have some concerns about it.
Any other discussion?
It would be people, it would be individuals that, when you actually make the hire, then you would get permission from them to, written permission from them to do a background check and a credit check.
So if the person weren't hired, this wouldn't be performed?
Would not happen. It does not happen until someone accepts the offer and then is pending on these checks.
Okay, so there probably wouldn't be anything detrimental on the reference check, or we wouldn't hire the person?
Well, one would hope, yeah. But it's a, we, from what I understand, we as a borough have not done any of that before. And it's very important, if you read the news. Any other discussions?
How soon would this go into effect?
Well, if you, if you approve it tonight, it would be in effect tomorrow.
Yeah. And it's, it's really, it's minimal work on administrative part, too.
Is there a cost to the security?
There could be, Doug. On the credit check, if you do it electronically, it's minimal. And I think the background checks are, can be done by our police department. And Bill, you can address that if you'd like.
We'll do criminal checks, and that's through employment records, how we can check them. And that's an $8 charge.
Yeah, so it depends on what agency you use for these background checks and how deep they go. But we don't know what that is at this time. There's, there's several different levels of security checks.
Right.
As you all know. So what, what level are we checking?
Chief, would you, would you be able to address the criminal background check as to what, what is checked?
The criminal background check for employment, it's any criminal history through NCIC that they, that will show up on their criminal record. I also check local jurisdictions as well, county, county IOPC and things like that.
Thank you, sir.
Does this include child line checks?
What, what?
Child line checks. This is, they were beefed up after the Sandusky issue and that for employment purposes, to make sure that people who have had issues with child abuse or, or other issues of sexual assault.
There are actually, excuse me, there are actually three different, one is FBI, one is state, and I'm not sure what the third one is, but these are clearances that allow you to work with children.
Okay, so we're not working with children here, so this would not apply?
It may apply. I'll give you an example. I was doing, I was a trainer for the Extension Service for Women Bone Strengthening, was held in the Faith United Methodist Church. And because there was a childcare center there, I had to get those clearances because I was nearby, even though I wasn't directly working with kids. Employees here at the borough would be in the same situation because they may come into contact with kids during their work.
I would think that that would be something we would do if we needed it. I would think, wouldn't certain entities require that before you work with kids?
In this case, I wasn't working with kids.
But you were near them?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that's, that's my question. What, what level of, of background checking are we going? For instance, there are jobs that require, where if you have a gambling addiction, you can't work there. Are we, are we going to that level? I don't know. I, you know, have we had a problem with this in the past?
I don't think we have, Doug, but, I mean, it's obvious if you've read the newspapers, other municipalities have. So it's just, do you want a question of, I guess, do you want to wait and see if it happens, or do you want to be a little proactive? I mean, even if you do a minimal background check, it's better than nothing. So that's kind of where we were going with it.
Chief, is it possible to do a Megan's Law check?
You can always do that. You can get on the Pennsylvania State Police website and check anyone.
You can look, yeah, you can look that up.
It's a public website.
Thank you.
My first concern was who, who has access to it? And you've answered that question. And I was wondering, at what level of security check are we doing? I don't know what the levels are. And I still don't know.
Well, the chief just told you what his criminal checks were. Reference checks are calls to previous employers, and also a credit check is run.
Through, how we do our hiring, we're set by guidelines through civil service. I think the borough should establish a way we're going to do it every single time would alleviate discussions like this. I think we should get something in place, written down what we expect on every hire. You're talking about credit reports and like that, I think is very important, especially if they're hired in our financial department.
Thank you. So Chief, and with your opinion, this is a great start. Is that correct?
Of course it is. You should always be vetting your employees.
Thank you. Anybody else? We are voting to approve the modification to Employee Policy Number 210, as recommended by the Borough Staff. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Brackbill?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
Yes.
Ms. Purnell?
Yes.
Ms. Tosti Vacy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all. We have no one for public comment tonight, so we will do council members' comments for the good of the order. Ms. McKean, what you got tonight? Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
I have nothing.
Are you happy?
I'm, I'm extremely happy. Very glad to be here. Thank you.
You're welcome. I do have something. Some of you may know, some of you may not. When we do the agenda, when we do the agenda, it is an agenda meeting that we hold the Thursday before the council meeting on Monday. It's usually at 10:30. And at that time, the Borough Manager has and Alyssa worked together to set most of the agenda, and we talk about things that need added, or we would like to see on the agenda at that time. So there is a lot of discussion and some back information on, on the agendas before then. So what I am, what I wanted to tell you, the reason I wanted to tell you about that is anybody on council can request something to be put on the agenda. If you're going to do that, there, there has to be some information. We're not going to do the research on it either. We can certainly help you. But if you have something that you would like to add to our agenda, I would be very happy to help you with that or talk to you about that. I would ask that you email me possibly the Monday or Tuesday before the, the meeting the following week. That way I would have some time to see if it's something we want, we can add, or to ask you questions or whatever. So I just wanted to let you know that that is always an option for council. Ms. Clayton?
Yes. Friday and Saturday, August 1st and 2nd will be the 42nd Annual Belfont Arts and Crafts Fair. We always have a great variety of artists and craftspeople, lots of good food, and great entertainment. So take advantage and get out there and enjoy the festivities.
Thank you. It's always a fun weekend.
Me? So I had gotten an email over the weekend concerning the stage and the people that contacted me about it, felt that we don't need this, the stage. And I sat there for a little bit and I thought about it, and I, and I put it together that the stage is being brought in to bring more people in and other activities could be done. What their concern was losing the gazebo and setting under the trees in a hot day. And I told them, I said, well, I don't think anything's going to happen to the gazebo. It should be, it shouldn't be affected. And so I haven't heard anything back, though. Like I told them, I said, it's going to be, it could be a year, year and a half till that stage is up.
There's a lot of misconceptions out there, I have found, Randy. And it's not being built with tax dollars. The gazebo will not change. That will always be there. So thank you for fielding that. I appreciate it. Joanne?
Yeah, I have a question. The General Assembly still has not passed the state budget. How does that affect the borough and how long can we go, if it does affect, before it could cause us a problem?
Well, it shouldn't have too much of an effect on us, Joanne, that I can think of, because obviously, you know, the enterprise funds that we have for water, sewer, refuse, I mean, they're paid through fees. And then, you know, the borough taxes cover your general fund, your parks and rec, and your lighting downtown, for example. So it, you know, I think where you'll probably see more of an impact would probably be like on grants and things like that down the road, depending on how it all ends up. But we don't get a lot of direct money from the state unless it's liquid fuels from PennDOT, for example.
So the reason I asked that was because I, what you just said is what I thought, and it should help our community feel a little bit better about the services we provide, knowing that there is a limited impact for us here in the borough. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Mr. Rida?
I just wanted to go back to the compost. And I had one more question I thought of after we passed that topic. If somebody pays for compost and then doesn't come get it, will they get a refund? Or have you thought about that?
They could get a refund, Rita, if they don't. They could get a refund, or they could come the next time, you know, as long as they have their receipt, you know. But we're really flexible with people. I mean.
I figured that, but I just thought that would be something important to mention. That was all.
Okay, could I have a motion and a second to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Opposed?